Good evening, I'm now calling the May 8, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. At this time, we'll invite Pastor Bob up for the invocation.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and this wonderful opportunity to serve you. We thank you for your many blessings in our life. We thank you for the privilege of living in such a beautiful place and to serve you in this area, and we pray your blessing upon the commissioners this evening and those who would submit testimony that in all things that you would get honor and glory. We commit this time to you. We thank you for your goodness and your grace and your love, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I mentioned earlier, good evening. My name is Matt Zercher and I'm the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this evening's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission is made up solely of appointed volunteers and sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council. The Commission reviews Planning and Zoning Commission issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the Commission initially has reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It is at that point I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the Commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the Commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, as I may exercise prerogative to confine public comment, if need be, to five-minute intervals per person should there be considerable public involvement in the case. Also, I would ask that you please, some people like to, you know, speak several times, come up to the mic several times, go ahead and just, you know, come up once and just, you know, that's what, that's that. So, one time at the mic, at the podium, to address the Commission, please. And then also, just to let you know, since we are dealing with multiple items with regard to the same tract, 65A and B, I will take public comments, open the floor to public comments, after we initially discuss the first item, so we'll get there in just a sec. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, oh, actually, this time, Vicki, would you call the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Rutherford?
Present.
Commissioner Dreeves? Absent. Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Dusky? Absent. Commissioner Gator?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Here.
If the Commission has reviewed the minutes, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the April 10, 2017 meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Vicki?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. At this time, are there any announcements from staff? I do have an announcement. I need to disclose that I live within 300 feet of this meeting's, this evening's hearing items. Received both Town Notice and Notice from the applicant about the, about the project. I also have given advice with regard to the public participation process to the applicant with regard to this application. I also attended the neighborhood meeting. I did initially think that I wouldn't, I would have to abstain from voting, but after discussing it with Town staff, they've actually said I'm okay to vote on this application. So with that, we'll get into the public hearing items. The first thing on the slate this evening is General Plan Amendment 17-001, a request by Pronghorn Ranch Homeowners Association for a General Plan Amendment from low-density residential to community commercial on approximately 3.5 acre portion A, as indicated on the map, of tract 65, Pronghorn Ranch, Unit 12, located on the west side of Antelope Meadows Drive, approximately 200 feet north of Mestino Road. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott. Joe?
Thank you, Chairperson. As you mentioned, there are four items here, and I'll be discussing them together, so I think I would just like to review real quickly the different items that will be coming up, so we know what's all being discussed. Also with the General Plan Amendment is the zoning map change, to change the zoning from RL, R1L10PAD to C3PAD Minor Commercial on the subject 3.5 acres. And then, subject to those being discussed and approved, there are plumbing development plans for the PDP 17004, for the recreational vehicle storage, for the homeowners association, and then also a PDP 1705, which is a request for the plumbing development plan for the pool and fitness center. And you can discuss those in more detail as they, we make a motion on them.
And Joe, just to clarify, you know, want to make sure everyone knows, we have to take, vote on these individually, and then after Joe's done with his presentation and after the applicant has come up to speak, then we'll open the floor to public comment.
Yeah, so bring it up, yeah, because I'll be discussing them all at the same time. So again, the Pronghorn Ranch master plan for 1,440 residential units along the rezoning was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the May 8, 2000 meeting, and was subject to a preliminary adequacy determination by the Arizona Department of Water Resources for a 100-year assured water supply. Up to this time, there have been 1,073 residential lots, have been approved, up to and including Unit 16. The property owners have been seeking also a minor increase in the number of housing units as allowed by the Arizona Department of Water Resources to utilize the full pre-declaration water allocation for Pronghorn Ranch project. As you know, at the April 10 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved PDP 17002 to amend portions of Unit 1 for an additional 23 lots, and also approved PDP 1703 for the forthcoming Unit 18, increasing the total lots from 110 to a maximum of 154 At the time of approval of the master plan, which is illustrated here, Portion A of what is now tract 65 was identified as open space, and Portion B was identified as a community center. Pronghorn Ranch 12 was approved April 27, 2006, which included tract 65. The property owner has indicated that the RV storage, as requested, has been in discussions and generally planned since the project's inception, and the area was inadvertently listed as open space while the clubhouse was identified for the west portion. The planned community center and RV parking and storage area was why the previous developer, which is Brown Family Community, installed what is in place now, an existing nine-foot privacy wall, and they have indicated that at the time, there was no charge on these lots for any kind of premium because they were located next to this site. This is discussed later in the narrative for the RV storage. Although Portion A was indicated as open space in the master plan, the Pronghorn Ranch zoning was approved as R1L10PAD, being consistent with the general plan at the time. When the General Plan 2020 was adopted in 2002, the residential property and subject property is designated as low-density residential, which is later adopted by the General Plan 2025. The proposed recreational vehicle storage facility for the Pronghorn Ranch Homeowners Association members and occupants of Pronghorn Ranch on Portion A then requires a General Plan Amendment and a zoning map change. Portion B of tract 65 is indicated on development plan for a new recreation center, and were indicated on the master plan and is allowed in the existing R1L10PAD zoning district, subject to approval of a plumbing development plan and subsequent final development plan. In the R1L district, libraries, parks, playgrounds, and community buildings are allowed when conducted as a non-commercial basis. Again, both plans will be discussed on the plumbing development plan. The C3 zoning district is being requested because it allows for equipment storage, rental sales yards, and rental storage units. RV storage is related to these uses and so is allowed in the C3 zoning, so long as configured in accordance with an approved plumbing development plan and subsequent final development plan. Rezoning of Portion A of tract 65 will allow for RV storage but exclude all other commercial uses as reflected in the stipulations of approval. Staff is recommending the community commercial designation for Portion A, and that is intended to allow for both neighborhood and community-serving commercial uses and provide convenience services for the local residents and surrounding neighborhood. This is also recommended in that the RV storage will be operated only for the benefit of the Pronghorn Ranch HOA members and occupants of Pronghorn Ranch, as a nonprofit association operation, and the conditions of rezoning allow only for that use specifically, prohibit other industrial uses. Been reported the neighborhood meeting regarding all four applications was held by the applicant on Thursday, March 9, 2017, with all property owners within 1,000 foot, having been invited by first-class mail. A list of the attendees and issues discussed are addressed in the minutes that were included in your packet. Plumbing development plans, as will be viewed as indicated here, for Portion A and B, provide the necessary written and graphic information to define the proposed development and use and provide a basis for the rezoning. More detailed information, including landscaping and lighting plans, will be part of a subsequent final development plan approved by the Town Council. Both FDP 1704 and 1705 are illustrated on this exhibit, and I'll discuss them a little Regarding the plumbing development plan for the RV storage on tract A, it is intended for HOA members, and is approximately 87 secured RV spaces that will be available exclusively for use by the Pronghorn Ranch HOA members and other occupants of Pronghorn Ranch. This area will be used for the parking, storage of recreational vehicles, trailers, vehicles, and boats that are transported into the storage area during allowed hours. The association will receive fees from association members and occupants for the use of the facility. Entire inside perimeter of the RV parking will be landscaped and with a buffer in order to keep recreational vehicles and other vehicles from being immediately adjacent to any wall. A dump station may be provided, if needed, based on feedback from the community. Hours of operation will be coordinated by the association manager and will be set similar to the main community clubhouse hours. The project will be improved in phases based on parking and storage demand. The RV storage center has been discussed and generally planned since the project's inception, even though the area was inadvertently listed as open space. As such, there is an existing nine-foot-tall masonry wall along the north and south property lines which will be installed, which was installed by the previous developer to protect the privacy of homeowners, as a former developer planned to use this area for a community center and RV parking. The lots and homes that abut the property were not charged a premium and were priced lower by Brown Family Community because of the non-optional nine-foot privacy wall that was installed at the time. Wall is intended to provide privacy and noise and view abatement from the planned clubhouse and RV storage. The remainder of the perimeter wall will be completed with the, with the project as developed. In patient, in anticipation, based on some of the community outreach meeting, there were some four Viewpoint neighbors who maybe didn't want to look at a nine-foot wall, and the association is planned on possibly adding an evergreen hedge as an additional, additional buffer for those homeowners if required. Proposed RV storage area will be lowered by four foot from the existing grade to ensure that adjacent homeowners will not be able to see the tops of RVs while standing in their backyards. The site is not part of any floodway, and after being lowered four feet, the site will continue to drain properly according to approved engineering plans for the project. The site is served by existing water and sewer available to the site. And lastly, the plumbing development plan 1705 for the pool and fitness facility, recreation area in the north portion of Pronghorn Ranch, will consist of a pool and clubhouse fitness facility on approximately two acres on Portion B of tract 65. Facilities will be for use by Pronghorn Ranch Homeowners Association members and occupants of Pronghorn Ranch. The pool will be completely fenced with keycard access for members and occupants only, and hours will be set in accordance with and by the Pronghorn Ranch clubhouse manager. The fitness clubhouse facility will be accessible 24 hours by keycard to members and occupants. The open areas around the pool and clubhouse fitness center will be for future amenities such as horseshoe pits, bocce ball, pickleball, tennis, barbecuria, kids' players, splash pad, and more. The site will be developed and landscaped in accordance with Town standards. Portion B, again, was originally shown in the master plan for a community center and is allowed in the R1L10 zoning district. So with that, we'll, I'll review and make, we'll start with the General Plan Amendment, and make a, ask for a motion on that, and then we can take some comments. So, staff observes that applicant has met the Town Code requirements for neighborhood or outreach, and that the requested General Plan Amendment and zoning map change for Portion A and a plumbing development plan on tract 65 are appropriate at this location, and again, we'll be asking for a separate motion on each one. First, for General Plan 1701, staff suggests the designation of Portion A is appropriate and that is intended to allow for both neighborhood and community-serving commercial interest, and that the RV storage, along with trailer vehicles and boat storage, will be operated only for the benefit of the Pronghorn Ranch Homeowners Association members and occupants of Pronghorn Ranch, and is also a nonprofit association operated, and the conditions of rezoning allow for only this use and prohibit other industrial uses. So with that, staff supports the request and asks Commission to make a motion to approve GPA 17001. With that, I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here, and I think has a little additional information to add.
Thank you, Joe. At this time, does anyone from the Commission have any questions of staff?
I have none. I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask the applicant to come up. Go ahead and state your name, go ahead and, speaking to the mic, and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, honorable Chairperson and honorable Commission. Cassandra Shuffler and myself, Ben Snyder, are here, as is the applicant, and the representatives of Pronghorn Ranch Homeowners Association, and we can answer your questions. We also prepared a video to display for you.
Would you like to do the video first and then ask questions? Okay.
Okay, so, there's music that goes with it, but I guess we're not going to have the music. So what we have is a nine-foot wall, as Joe explained, probably 80% of that wall's in because the entire southern boundary and northern boundary is installed, so the remaining ends need to be tied in. But the nine-foot wall was always planned to create that, as mentioned, the privacy and provide the screening for sound and the visual enclosure. What you see here is, it was a pretty quick, it's a quick video, showed the RV area, now we're going into the fitness center, clubhouse, and this will be a 24-hour facility abutting the pool and the other recreational facilities, as the video takes us outside. Obviously, these are animations, they are based on plans that have been designed, shows fairly accurate and pretty close to what we, represented of what we plan to do. I'm assuming you can see that, but, okay.
Yeah.
Members and occupants of the association really enjoy the new pool we added a few years ago by the main clubhouse. Oh, I'm sorry. We found that the members of the association really enjoy the fitness facility and additional pool that we added three years ago by the existing clubhouse, and this is similar to what we did there, as the growth has taken us to a higher demand for pool and recreational Did it stop? I think we're just about a few in.
Okay. That's good. All right. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
I do. Did she do this?
She was responsible for hiring.
Normally, normally, the girls do this a lot better than, than us guys, except for Matt. Matt's, Matt's a communicative guy.
He's really good with that stuff. Cassandra hired a local architect, Tom Terry, to help us with that.
Okay. Okay.
I'm actually the HOA manager for Pronghorn Ranch.
Oh, okay.
I noticed in, when I was at the property, that the area where the RV storage is going to be, it looks like it's several feet higher, and you mentioned in Joe's presentation that that's going to be lowered. Can you give us an idea of how that's going to work and how that's going to come about?
Yes, so, once we begin construction, that'll be the first step, is to follow our grading and drainage plan, and that will lower the entire site approximately four feet and make it slightly higher than the Antelope Meadows Parkway that you drive by on.
What's ETA?
As soon as we get your approval and the, and the Council approval, we'll, we'll move forward.
Okay.
Is it, in your plan, the, the wall that separates the RV storage from the recreational center area is a, a future? Will that, will that be done as, as the storage is started to use, so that the people coming up Antelope Meadows won't, won't be able to see the RV storage?
Correct. So part of Phase 1 of construction would complete the entire wall for both screening and security.
Any other questions?
Just got a comment.
Go for it.
You did a great job. Shows a lot of good quality. Really does. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we will open the floor to public comment. If, when you come up to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone wishing to address the Commission, just signify by raising your hand. Okay, sir, in the blue sweater?
Glenn Brower, 8415 North Sable Way, Prescott Valley. Brand-new residence of Arizona. I have a question as far as cost. I understand that in some developments, and we have one in Pronghorn, we have a park that is called the City Park. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's a.
Is that, was that, is that maintained by the city?
That is maintained by the town, yes.
Okay. And Portion Number B, that is only going to have access to HOA members of Pronghorn, with my understanding, is the city going to, the cost, burden the cost of that part of it and maintain it or not?
I, I, I can answer that question, just, you know, you know, Joe's nodding and so forth. The town will not be maintaining any part of Portion B.
But how about the initial cost for developing?
There's no cost to the town.
Okay. So in the previous times, when you have put in parks in different HOA developments, you did burden the cost to install. Is that correct?
The only, the only park that's in Pronghorn, just like there's a park in Viewpoint?
Yes.
The Viewpoint, Prong, and Prong, Viewpoint Park and Pronghorn Park are entities of the town. The town park, Parks and Rec handles those.
Well, when you say an entity, you're saying that is not your property. Is that your property, or has that been donated to?
I'll, I'll have Joe further, get, answer that for you.
The parks that are what you call public parks were developed as part of development agreements or requirements for the subdivision to develop a certain amount of public park area, in which case the developer was obligated to develop those parks and then, after the, and then turn them over to the town after they were done, so it, they didn't involve any cost to the town that was required by the developer and then dedicated to the town.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does. My other thing is that when I looked at that area, and I noticed, I thought it was in the floodplain, but Joe mentioned something that it isn't in the floodplain. So, basically, if there is a control, there's a retention area on the other side of the street, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
The answer is yes.
That retention area on the other side of the street is not accumulated from this parcel at all? Any overflow from this?
I'll invite the applicant back up in just a few minutes, and he can, you know, address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any others, any other questions, sir? While you're up here?
No, but like I said, we're brand-new to this Arizona residence, and what I've seen, I went through one brief election with you people, and you're all doing a great job.
Well, welcome to Prescott Valley, sir. Thank you. Next, who else would like to address the Commission?
Yes, my name is Richard Sawerski, 7794 East Lavender Loop in Pronghorn, and just wanted to state that I'm very much in favor of this development. I currently have an RV that I have to store probably about 20 miles away, and it would be, we use it almost every weekend, and it would be very convenient to have more local storage. Also, we're at that end of the development, and we have about a mile walk down to the existing recreational facility, and having a facility much closer to us would, would be beneficial, so I'm in favor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, sir, and gentleman in the red hat?
Thank you. My name is Ralph Bruno. I live at 7550 East Amber Ridge Way, right across the street from this future development. I am not in favor of this improvement of Section A for the RV portion of the lots. My first question is, and I brought this up at the meeting we had with the residents, why in a residential area are you putting an RV parking space? Why can't you put it on the fringe of the area and not disturb residents that live around it, both Pronghorn and Viewpoint? The other thing, traffic increased to in and out with the RV vehicles, the safety of the pedestrian citizens and children who will be using the pool and the recreational Number two, the RVs will be coming in, I know from experience, I wanted to leave at 4:00 AM in the morning to get on the road to go somewhere. These people are going to be coming in all times of the day and the night. They mentioned that they're going to have nine-foot walls and dig four feet into the property. RVs are 13 or 14 feet tall, and sometimes taller when they have an air-conditioning unit on the top, so you're going to be able to see it. They talk about the walls on the north and south side of the development built by Brown Family. Those walls are not secured in the ground with foundation. Where I live, I have similar wall, and you go up there and you can shake that wall. So if they're going to use this and then dig four feet below that, it's going to make The other thing about the RV parking, they say they're going to pull in, park there, and then leave. Who's to say some of these people? Who's to say some of these people parked their RV there on the weekends and start tailgating, having parties in the parking lot? They have guests that come in, and instead of using the facilities, they can use the RV. So, I'm against that. And the last thing, if, I think, the last thing, the HOA residents of Pronghorn Ranch, they're notified by things by, like this, but they have no say-so, because we have no control of what goes on there, just Mr. Schaefer, who has the majority of the votes, being the owner of most of the property until sufficient number of lots or buildings are sold. So, we have no real say-so, except in this type of format. So, again, I'm voting against portion A of the development. And my last question, can I get a copy of the minutes of this meeting?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Where do I go for that?
You would contact after the meeting, contact staff, Vicki Anderson, right there would be your point of contact.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll have the applicant again come back up after we're done with public comment, and then any, you know, staff if need be as well. Anybody else for public comment? Please come on up. Please state your name and the, and your address for the record, please.
I'm Frances Bailey, and I live at 8301 North Sable Way, and we've been living there a little over a year now, and we do have an RV. And for us, we have to keep our RV where we could find a place, and that's at Galpin Ford in Dewey. So, in order to get our RV ready to take a trip, we have to go there, get a permit at Pronghorn to bring the RV to our house, which we can only keep there two days, and get it ready to take the trip. When we come back, we've got the same problem. We can't bring it to the house without getting a permit to bring it there overnight to unload it. So, for us, it would be very nice to be able to have our RV closer to home, and I don't see any problem with RVs having parties or anything like that. I think that Pronghorn is, is very good about setting the precedent for what goes on in the neighborhood, and I haven't seen any negative things. I have seen a lot of RVs in our, on our street and in our area, because people have the same problem that we do, trying to get ready to go for a week or a weekend.
Yeah.
So, we were, we are in favor of it, actually.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
Cindy Stigall, 8487 North Sable Way in Pronghorn Ranch. Pretty much in favor of everything. I'm just wondering if there can be a, a number of the, the spaces that could be covered. That would be really helpful.
That would be definitely. We'll invite the applicant back up, and he can address that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice? All right, so the floor is now closed to public comment. This time, we'll invite the applicant back up to address questions and concerns with regard to this application. What was that?
Hello again. I think I heard two questions pretty clearly. One was about the drainage, and, and yes, the, sorry, the, and again, it's Ben Snyder and Cassandra Shuffler. The drainage will go from this site and flow downhill into the drainage basin that was engineered and designed to handle this water. So, this project was, was already planned for and designed to handle that water, as well as other water. And then I think the second question was about coverage, covered parking. I think I heard that question. So, we are, we, we have cost estimates for, for covers, and we will install covers based upon demand. So, there seems to be a mixture of folks that would like the, the extra. It will cost a little extra to have the covers, and so we'll provide those based upon demand. And we've done two surveys with between 80 and 90% in favor throughout the community of this project, and we have enough people, on this, on the second survey, we asked if you would put a deposit down, and we have enough people with deposits to go forward with Phase, fully with Phase One, maybe even Phase Two, just with the initial deposit commitments that we've, we've received.
Um, any, anything to add with, with regard to the other comments that were made?
Okay, so, I caught those two questions, let's see.
There was a question about the height of the wall?
And stability of the wall.
Stability of the wall.
Yes, yes. So, nine feet plus four feet gives us 13 feet, and basically, what we've found is that RVs are, the maximum height they could ever be with their air conditioner sticking up on top would be 13 feet, five inches, because highways are 13, the bridges are 13, six. You see them all over the place, 13, six, 13, six, 13, six. And the fact of the matter is, most of them are at least a foot shorter than that. In fact, very, very few would ever approach that height. And then the other consideration is, since the people that are viewing towards these, let's say, taller recreational vehicles, if, if there are a few that are just super tall with the, with the air conditioning unit maybe hitting the 13, five mark, they're at a ground level looking over a nine-foot wall. So, we're going to put and require all the tallest ones to be in the center, so that if you were standing outside of this area, you still could not see from any, from any of the four sides, you could still not see a recreational vehicle.
What about wall stability?
Yes, so, wall stability was reinforced with extra footings for those nine-foot walls as required by the engineer. So, they are solid. There is dirt that's built up against them on the inside where the RV area, that's going to be lowered, but that was already engineered when they were designed.
And then, can you address traffic?
Yes, so, the traffic studies, which we have just updated, or it's not quite finalized, but we'll be coming back to you in the future. As Joe mentioned, we have some minor modifications for the build-out as we're seeing a finish line to, to developing Pronghorn. But the traffic studies, we just had a two-day, um, study done where they put the lines out and collected the traffic data, and it showed that we are actually 40% below what we projected and what the national averages are. So, we actually have a much lower traffic, um, reality than, than we ever budgeted for or planned for, so we're in great shape on traffic.
And then, one of the other concerns was raised about, you know, having parties in, in the RV lot, you know, can you address that?
Sure. Cassandra, our manager, I'll let her respond, but she, she's not going to let that happen.
No, I'm not. The RV storage area is going to be monitored by cameras, and then the only way in there is going to be through your access card system. So, you have to have an access card to get into there. Plus, it's going to be monitored by cameras 24/7. If there's any parties or anything like that, we'll put a stop to it, for sure. And in fact, it's going to be in our CCNRs that there's not going to be allowed. There, it's strictly a storage area. That's all it is.
Does anyone have any questions? Gary?
Yeah, I have one question about, are you going to have certain times they can go in and out of the, the recreation, because that was mentioned about different types of hours and so forth. I live in a home plan development, so we have hours for our certain things, so.
Yes, so it's going to mimic the same hours as our clubhouse, which is 8:00 to 8:00, and then in the summer, it's going to be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And only during those hours will you be able to access the storage facility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question follows the, the lady in back, and I apologize for not remembering your name. But when, different from how it is now, will owners of RVs that are parked in there, will they be able to go in, kind of load up and unload when they come back and before they go to trips? Will they be allowed to do that, where they're not occupying it, where they're just getting the vehicle ready? Or are they still going to have to get a permit and move it to their house in order to load up or unload?
No permit necessary. In our CCNRs, we have a two consecutive day rule, meaning it's unloading and loading purposes. So, they would go to their home for two days, they would unload and load, and then they would go to the storage facility and park their vehicle. So, it's basically just a storage facility. So, yes, they would still be unloading and unloading at their house.
Any other questions?
Sounds pretty comfortable to me.
And then, question answered, sir? Just want to make sure.
Permission to ask the applicant to the chair?
Go for it.
You mentioned that covered parking you're going to have?
Yeah.
Would it be beneficial for us to have solar panels up there to defray the cost of the operation of the pool and stuff like that?
So, that's a great question, and we are researching that right now to see if we could do that. We, we, we would definitely be open to that, as long as it wouldn't create a burden to anybody else.
So, was the covered parking for the, the RV storage, or was it for the use of the recreational center?
No, no covered parking for the recreational center, it's just for the RV parking.
I'm going to kind of, she arrived late, this lady over here, and I will allow you to definitely address and ask a question or anything like that. Please state your name for the record and the, and your address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Catherine McCall, and I live at 8,000 North Music Mountain Lane, and my back fence abuts that property right there. So, if anybody's going to be impacted by it, it's going to be me. I have come to grips with the fact that that project is going to go forward. I would prefer that it not, but it's going to. I have limited concerns. Once, one, I've been told that the RV parking has 11 low-light security cameras. I'm very concerned about the lighting. I've been told that it will be dark-sky compliant. However, the streetlight in front of my house is dark-sky compliant, and it's 30 feet tall. So, I would like any and all lighting on that project to be below my nine-foot wall. Without that, you are going to destroy my view of the sky, my peace and tranquility, my enjoyment of the dark out there, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing I would like to see done is development of, up here where on portion B, there is egress that can go from North Music Mountain Lane directly to the front of this project, and I would like to see that developed. The other thing is, in Phase Three, they propose a tennis court. Now, I know that tennis is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, however, I can't live with a tennis court. The pong, pong, pong of the ball drives me nuts, but worse yet is the screech of the tennis shoes on the court. It is to me like fingernails are to a chalkboard, and it can cause migraines. So, I would prefer that the tennis court either not be there, or that it change places with the pool and be where the pool is and bring the pool down a little bit more. Thank you very much. But my question to be answered now is how high will the lights be? Thank you.
We'll have the applicant address that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your question. So, the lighting plan is, is still in process? That'll be something that we, we will finalize through the staff process and the various departments, correct, Joe? But we will definitely take that into consideration. We don't want to destroy your, your dark-sky views, and we appreciate, I live in Pronghorn and appreciate that as well. So, we'll do everything we can to keep that from disturbing you.
You can't, you can't do that, unfortunately.
Well, I'm not a lighting engineer or designer, but I, I can say that the, the HOA hears the spirit of your request and would like to honor that. I, I just don't, I just don't think I'm qualified to say heights or guarantees.
Lighting plan, you should at least say that no direct light, like she has streetlights out there, the direct light's hitting her, but lights should be able to be directed away, so there's no direct light, uh, on your property. I don't know if that's, you know?
Right. Yeah, I think, I think that the highest the light would be, would, would, would be the height of the canopies, which are going to be in the center and pointed down. They're not going to be out near you. So, I think, I think we're going to be good. I, I just, it's, it's a process of working with staff and the engineers.
As a retired electrical contractor, yes, we do have lighting that will do that purpose and will not interfere with you at all.
Well, there you go.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, we get her name information, and that we review when we get some lighting plan, that you meet with her, and before we go to council, that we, we make sure we involve you in the process to see the lighting plan before final approval, okay?
All right. Any other, any questions from the commission? Okay. I'll, I'll, there's, I'll go ahead and, go ahead and. Sure, I.
So, on the tennis court, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
So, so, as far as the, the design and the layout, the tennis court is a final third-phase option for us. It would be difficult to, to move that. However, I, I think that the nine-foot walls act a lot like the walls that are installed around freeway systems. They're, I mean, a nine-foot wall is really, really tall, and I don't think that if somebody's on the inside of, of that wall and somebody's playing tennis in the middle of the property, I don't think they're going to be able to hear that tennis like you can down at the existing tennis court, because it's, it's blocked by the wall, which has a lot of deadening of sound effect. The sound all goes that way instead of that way.
I know Commissioner Roberts does have a question, but real quick.
I used to play tennis, so I don't think it's a big deal. But anyway, are you going to have the screening, the canvas screen around the fence? Because that'll take a lot of noise. It'll take a lot of noise.
We'll have that as well, so there's two screens and, and plantings as well.
Thank you.
One of the other concerns that was brought up was the egress from Music Mountain, the breezeway there, I guess, with the passage between the two walls. Do you want to address that?
Yes, so, I, I believe, uh, I'm sorry, what was, what was your name again? Catherine? Catherine, I believe you're talking about the drainage way that's, if we can point to it.
No, that's not where I'm talking about. I'm talking about closer to where that bed is, and it's in between 658 and 659, and it's not a really, it's a gravel.
Yes, yes. So, that, that will be a pedestrian access for you. Is that what you want?
Yes.
That's what it's going to be?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. We'll be moving on. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll go ahead, and again, we have to take these in, one by one. Any other discussion or any questions with regard to, we'll start with GPA 17-001, or I will entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion. Approval of GPA 17-001. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Vicki?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Zoning map change 17-001. Again, any questions or further comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion for approval of ZMC 17-001 with the conditions that staff put forward.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Which one of you wants to go on record?
Whatever Vicki gets, I'll second it.
He gets the second?
You want the second?
I'll take the second.
Okay. Since you guys both spoke up at the same time. All right.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner- or Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right. Preliminary development plan 17-004. Any questions or further comments? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PDP 17-004 with conditions and send on to the council.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, Vicki?
Okay. Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Chairperson- or Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. All right. Last one. Preliminary development plan 17-005. Again, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion for approval of PDP 17-005 with the conditions put forth by staff.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Vicki?
Okay. Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chair Rankin to do the call to public.
The call to public is for consideration and discussions of comments from the public not already discussed here this evening. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission?
All right, seeing none. We'll close call to the public. At this time, the final item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so automate it. I'll have you second, okay?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.